We'll call this meeting the order for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, June 3, 2025. Please note that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the Legislative Chamber alongside an automatic external defibrillator. Please stand for the pledge.
For the reasons specified by the United States of America and the Republic of America, our nation under God, in the religion of Jesus Christ.
We'll start with our Douglas County Board of Equalization meeting. Mr. Clerk, when you're ready, we'll take a roll call.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Borgeson.
President.
Commissioner Kavanaugh. Present. Commissioner Fahey is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First items of business are items A and B, A being the approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, May 20, 2025, B being a call for a meeting on set Tuesday, June 10, 2025, as date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Do I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have resolutions C through G, which we can vote and block plus adjournment if desired.
Motion by Rogers. Second by Morgan. To approve all resolutions plus adjournment for equalization.
Was there anybody here that wanted to speak on any resolutions within Board of Equalization? If not, excuse me, Commissioner Kavanaugh.
I just have a question for the record on item D. This is a resolution to amend the Board of Equalization property valuation protest procedures to clarify online filings and appointment information for protests submitted by unauthorized non-owners. And this is something that's come to our attention in the last year or so. I've had conversations with various staff and folks involved with the Board of Equalization process, and I'd just like to maybe outline for the public on record exactly what this would address relative to these protests submitted by unauthorized non-owners. It's been my understanding that you have to have a stake in the property to protest its valuation, and apparently that's not exactly the case. And so in conversations that I've had with those folks who do deal with this, they've indicated that recently, unauthorized non-owners have taken it upon themselves to file protests on my property, your property, whoever's property, which, you know, it kind of brings up a question of standing, but it also could impact the integrity of the entire Board of Equalization system. So I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, the county attorney or Ms. Hall may have drafted this. If you could just address for the public so that they know what situation issue we're addressing and how we're doing that.
Catherine Hall, Douglas County Administration. Correct. So this Board of Equalization approved the real property valuation protest procedures last month. Then we identified an opportunity to provide a little additional clarification to those. Generally, most protests have been filed by the property owner or an individual who's been authorized by that property owner to file a protest. Last year, we had a group of protests that were submitted by a person who was neither the owner of the properties protested nor authorized by those owners. So these procedures, and just a couple points on pages six and seven, clarify what that process looks like if someone is not authorized nor the property owner, so they have a better expectation of how the process goes when they request an appointment.
Okay. And Mr. Ash, I know that your office oversees the Board of Equalization. Could you address this a little bit for us?
Dan Ash, Douglas County Clerk. Catherine did a good job of pointing out what the exact changes are. Basically, if you're an unauthorized non-owner and you want to request an appointment, there's a scenario where if you file online as an owner or an authorized agent, if you're just doing filing one residential protest, you're able to schedule your appointment on your own. And I guess this is our way of maybe having a little more say when the unauthorized non-owner... I mean, if it's just one protest, it doesn't matter if you're an owner, an agent, or unauthorized. If you're doing two or more protests or a commercial protest, you're not going to be able to schedule the appointment on your own. But in the one scenario where you're filing online and you're just doing one residential property, normally you'd be able to schedule an appointment on your own through the online system, but for unauthorized non-owners, we want to have a little more say, I guess, and, you know, reach out to them and schedule the appointment. I mean, they'll still have input when it happens, but I guess it's just, we like to make sure, you know, they're allowed to... It seems odd, I know, but they're actually allowed to file these protests even if they're not an owner or authorized, but I guess this is kind of a way that brings it more to our attention, so we make sure we're aware, because obviously when the owner gets the notification that someone's filed a protest on their property, it's usually pretty surprising, so...
Well, I think that's an important thing. I mean, we all have, I think all property owners have the same right to file a protest on behalf of ourselves. I guess I wasn't really aware that anybody could file a protest on my property, on its valuation, and bring that matter before the Board of Equalization. But as you indicated, it would be important to me, as a property owner, to know if PJ or somebody else had filed a protest on my property. Otherwise, I'd be kind of sitting out there blind, and somebody else is down here talking to the referees or whoever about my actual property owners. This struck me as a question of what standing do I have to protest your property or your property or anybody else's property? And it was pointed out to me that the statutory language deals with protests by persons rather than property owners. And I'd just ask the county attorney maybe for a little clarification on that particular point, because it apparently is open to interpretation who would have standing to file these protests.
Tricia, your county attorney's office. So one of the theories you could proceed under for protesting your property would be equalization, and that would involve the property of others. And then specifically under 771502, it does have a provision that tells us that if a non-owner files, the owner gets notification. So the statute clearly contemplates a non-owner filing, because it has that notification provision in there saying that the owner should be notified.
And the folks involved in the Board of Equalization, if you could clarify for us, has this been a significant item in the past, or is this somewhat of a recent development?
Dan Ash, County Clerk. It's recent. So last year, we had a group of individuals... Well, actually, I don't know beyond the one individual. I'm not sure who else may have been. There was a... They went by TNT installations, and they filed, I think it was like 41 protests on properties that they did not own, and nor were they authorized by those owners to protest. And they included the mayor's house, it included a former assessor Pepper's house, and it was stuff like... Just a wide variety of... But I think mainly their argument was, well, they had various ones, and I don't think they did anything more than just fill out the protest form, and then in the reasons section, it was generally, hey, there is a similar property that sold for this amount. This should be higher. And ultimately, none of the protests were successful. They all got dismissed. But prior to that, there was an individual who had filed in 2023, had filed two protests, a different group. I actually can't remember his name, but he filed two protests on properties that he did not own. And we may have had another example prior to that, but really, it was since 2023 when it's kind of been happening more. And, I mean, protests just started getting filed over the weekend, so I'm not aware of any situations yet, but I would not... We're expecting it to happen again, so...
I appreciate that. And Catherine, you indicated that the procedural changes are contained on pages six and seven, which have, I guess, a couple of dozen bullet points in terms of appointment information for real property valuation protests and terms and conditions for real property valuation protests filed online. Are there specific ones on that list that we could kind of take to point out as on-point to this particular issue?
Sure. Catherine Hall, County Administration. On page six, if you look at the third item down, if protesting one residential property as an owner, authorized agent, and your appointment is not scheduled yet, those steps that follow apply. And the fourth line down, what we've done is added at the end of it, if protesting a non-residential property, protesting multiple properties, or if you filed one residential protest by mail hand delivery, or protesting as an unauthorized non-owner. So we've just added that, so there's more clarity as to how it will proceed if you request an appointment. And that's a reflection, as Clerk Ash mentioned, it's just a different level administrative work involved, so that those types of protests who are filed that way have to go sort of differently. We contact them so we can do some of the work ahead of time to figure out what appointments are available. And then on the seventh page, the changes are similar. This time, I'm going to count from the bottom. The fifth and sixth bullets from the bottom reflect similar changes. The sixth from the bottom, we added if I'm filing only one residential protest as an owner or authorized agent. And then the fifth from the bottom, we added if I am filing a non-residential protest or protesting multiple properties, or if I am filing as an unauthorized non-owner.
And the other item?
I'm going to have to...
That's it.
Close the round there.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you. We're going to go, Commissioner Morgan?
Let me ask you to answer, Dan, just a simple thing, and maybe Catherine is more appropriate to bother with this. As I understand it, someone can file for, let's say it's Sharon in our office, on her taxes if they want to do without her signing that form?
Yeah.
If they want it. Now, I've helped some citizens out that have called, and I do have them sign it normally, but, you know, where they can sign as the owner. And I'm not going to ever sign anyone else's name, but I've done that last year, probably 20 times with the referee and gone with the citizen, and I get the appointment set up. So you can do it that way if you want, but I know you're correct that there have been a little more of those cases where somebody decides to file something like that without the homeowner knowing it.
Yeah. Yeah, just to clarify.
But that answers the question that you can do it, and that's the way that the statute is.
Yeah. Now, who's ever filing the protests, we would need their signature, but they would not need the signature of the homeowner to proceed. As long as they're signing, they could still go ahead with the protest, so, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh?
Catherine, just back to that last point. The difference, as I see it in these two procedural items, is that if I'm an owner or authorized agent, and I don't get scheduled within 72 hours, the Board of Equalization will schedule it. But there's no 72-hour provision if I'm not an owner or authorization. It's just the Board of Equalization will attempt to contact me, and if not able to contact me, they'll just schedule it. Is that essentially the difference there?
Catherine Hall, County Administration. Yes, I think that summarizes it. Generally, if you're filing one residential protest as an owner or authorized agent, you have an opportunity to schedule your own online, or the clerical staff will follow-up to schedule it. And in this case, the distinction is you don't have the opportunity to schedule your own appointment for a non-owner that's unauthorized, and the clerical staff contacts you. So in any event, if either you have the opportunity to file, or you will be contacted to schedule an appointment. Everyone who requests an appointment will have that opportunity.
Okay. And Mr. Goodwilly, I know this isn't exactly under your purview with the Board of Equalization, but have you experienced in your valuation process a similar, I guess, interest by non-owner authorized agents in coming in and talking to you about the valuation of properties?
Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor's Office. The short answer to that is no.
Okay.
We don't have people clamoring in to talk about your house or Commissioner Friend's house, or the value of the grocery store down the street. This is kind of a relatively new phenomenon.
Okay. Thank you. Catherine, would it be fair to say that these changes that are proposed here are procedural but not substantive? The people will still be able to file protests on properties that they do not own or not authorized agents? The notification of the scheduling will just be slightly changed? Is that correct?
Catherine Hall, County Administration. Yes, I would say this is more just a clarification of procedure. We're sort of trying to spell out more specifically what the expectations would be.
I don't know if you have anything further to add, Mr. Clerk?
No, and it's just the one... It's just addressing the one scenario where if you're filing, you know, it's just, of course, after the fact, after you all approved the rules on the last meeting, I think it was the next day, I was like, oh, I meant to, you know, I wanted to add in a clarification for unauthorized non-owners. And it's just the one scenario of normally, if you file one residential protest online, you could have like kind of more... You could schedule an appointment through the online filing system. But for unauthorized non-owners, we would like to have, even though the individuals that we're expecting are probably going to file many, they wouldn't be able to do it anyway, but we're just trying to address all future scenarios going forward where we'd have a little more involvement in the appointment process, if that's under that scenario.
Well, thank you for clarifying this potentially very significant issue here. We appreciate it. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. Larry?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. Thank you, Mr. Kavanaugh. I'm against this revolution. I'm not a lawyer, but it kind of smells when I try to read it and interpret it, the lawfare. It implies to me that the system is more rigged than what I thought, in that anybody with a little bit of experience in real estate, owning property, transferring property, whatever, making a profit on it, can use this to protest against my property valuations and get mine raised as compared to his, before he sells his property or buys a property and turns it into a flipping situation. Out-of-state owners, absentee landlords, et cetera, have the advantage of a rigged system. It's a conflict of interest to have real estate people, professionals, involved in this. So I think that, as the founding fathers conceived the county board, the people actually sit above you in terms of power and intent. Some of this should be declared null and void, because it rigs the system against me. I'm going to run home today and file a protest against every one of the so-called comparables, most recent ones, but maybe even the last two or three years where I've been refused because I live in Dundee. I don't want to live in Dundee because the taxes are too high? Absolutely. That was an unfriendly situation with my appraisers, trying to get the appointment, and then, once you get there, well, we don't have a lot of time. Dump your information to the secretary over there in the corner. Just give it to them. Really, that's all we're here for today, is to accept your stuff. No discussion whatsoever. So it needs to maybe be considered null and void process, because it's rigged against the property owner. I guess maybe I got to go back to Iowa. Thank you.
Thank you. And as a reminder, we're on Board of Equalization resolutions plus adjournments. Any other comments or questions on resolutions? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We'll now go into our Board of Commissioners meeting. Roll call.
Commissioner Borgeson. Commissioner Kavanaugh. Commissioner Fahey is absent. Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Commissioner Morgan.
Here.
Commissioner Rogers. Mr. Chair.
Here. First item of business are items under Section 1A and B, A being the approval of minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held Tuesday, May 20, 2025, B being approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, June 3, 2025. Do I have a motion, a second?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan. Please vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Next, we're going to jump into our consent agenda, items A through K. I'm going to go ahead and pull separately items C for discussion and a separate vote. Are there any other items requested? G as well. Are there any other items requested? B for just discussion or an actual separate vote? Okay. We'll get to that. Okay. So official separate votes on C and G. Otherwise, we'll jump to discussion on C in a second here. Can I get a motion on A through K minus C and G?
Second.
Motion by Rogers, second by Morgan, and we'll jump into our discussion here. I know Commissioner Kavanaugh has a question on item C.
Yes. I'm sorry, B.
Okay.
Yeah. B is the approval of a contract between the Douglas County Juvenile Assessment Center, Jack, and Heart of a Champion, DBA One Heart Project, to provide services for diversion use. And this is under the Juvenile Assessment Center's Johnson's... I don't know. Is she here? Yes, okay. I'm basically looking for just some general policy. What does this program actually provide? And the budgeted amount.
Good morning, Commissioner. Thanks for the question. We do not have a budgeted amount for this particular program. We work with programs across the community. This particular program, their board requires a contract, so there isn't a specific amount. We have not made a guarantee that we will refer youth to this, but if we do refer youth to this, there's a contract in place. What they do provide is actually a range of services from curriculum and mentoring and some job readiness skills, so there's quite a range of services they offer. I'd be glad to forward their information to you.
That would be good. Did I understand you correctly, we're currently doing business with them? Or we have been?
This is just a new...
This is brand new?
This is brand new.
Okay.
Brand new. They currently have been operating in correction, youth correction facilities, and they're trying to branch into community-based.
In the adult corrections facility?
No, in youth.
Douglas County Youth Center?
You would have to... I don't believe they're in the Douglas County Youth Center. They're in the youth correction facility, the state one, and I apologize. And CYM?
Oh, in Kearney?
Is that what it's called? No, no, here in town.
Where?
By there.
I apologize. What's it called?
The East Omaha Corrections Facility?
And they operate in other states, in detention facilities also. And so currently, they're trying to bring their curriculum further into the community instead of just the sort of locked facilities.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this calls for the approval of a contract. Do we have a contract?
Yeah, that's what this...
Okay. But the contract does not have an amount in it?
It... There is an amount. There's an established amount that we would pay per youth, which is $1,000.
Okay. I guess that was my question.
Yes, yes, yes.
What's that amount?
Yeah, $1,000 per youth.
Okay. So it's not $100,000, it's $1,000 per served youth?
Per served youth.
Okay. Do we have any estimate what that would be on an annual basis?
We don't. We can't do that, because we haven't had the program access, so we really don't know how many youth we would send.
Sure, sure. Okay. So this is a new startup for us as Douglas County?
It is.
Okay. And you would be administering this?
We would, at the Juvenile Assessment Center, be making referrals.
Right.
Yes.
The contract, right.
Yes.
And is it for one year?
It's actually for, I can't recall exactly. It's something like a year, and then we can extend it without going through this whole formal process.
Sure. So just so that we're clear, this would be a contract that we could come back to in one year and say, we want to continue this, or we do not want to continue this?
I believe so.
Is that provision in the contract? I haven't read the contract.
I... This is not my wheelhouse, and...
Tricia, your county attorney's office. I'll try to assist, and I think if we turn to page five of the contract, there's a term and termination paragraph there, and the contract is effective from the effective date, which I haven't looked up the definition in this contract, but usually it's signing, through August 30 of 2025, and then there is an extension through December 31 of 2025 there as well.
Thank you.
So say that last part again, I'm sorry. It would be effective to August 1 of this year?
It says effective from the effective date through August 30 of 2025. The contract may be extended through December 31 of 2025.
And then it terminates? It self-terminates?
Well, you can always extend a contract by mutual agreement, so I think there is that additional possibility, but that's what's clearly stated in the contract, is there's an extension through the end of December.
Okay. So would that come back to us for continuation at those points?
It just said, the paragraph says that it may be renewed in writing by the parties, and so I don't know that it would require additional action by this board. I think it probably could be extended by Sean.
Indefinitely?
Well, through December 31 of 2025. That's what's provided for in that paragraph.
Yes. What I'm trying to get at is, if they continue it on December 31, 2025, what is the term of the contract at that point?
So if I may, and I apologize if I'm being unclear, the contract runs through August of this year. The extension is through December 30 of 2025.
Uh huh.
I believe if there's action after that point, it would need to come back.
I see.
I apologize for being unclear.
Okay. So, you know, I...
Let's conclude your first term. Do you want a second round, Commissioner?
Just very briefly.
Okay.
My concern is, you know, terms and conditions of any contract, and this is clarification on both of those points, but I would like to have, at that point in December of this year, maybe you could come back to us and say, it's working, we'd like to go forward, here's how many kids we've served, here are the good things that have happened with it. You know, diversion is certainly a goal of all of ours, and so we would renew, or if you say it's not working, not renew at that point. Would that be...
I'd be glad to do that.
Okay. And, you know, based on that, I think this is worth going forward with. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on consent agenda minus C or G? Larry?
Larry Store, 501-5 Lafayette Avenue, 68132. I have 10.
I had 10 hours of contract law in business school back in the day, and reading this and listening to her, it seems to me like it's another one of these programs that really doesn't tell us much. It may not be successful. Therefore, we, the people, recommend you do not allow a contract that's not even telling us how much money we're going to be up to, particularly now that the federal government is taking money away from grants for this and grants for that, that you won't be able to support. And then you come to the homeowners, I guess, for more money. But she didn't seem to understand the program much herself. I don't know whether this is going on per se in the Justice Center right now or not, but maybe we need to divert the youth to those type of programs before they get into the system. Those programs might work better, but waiting until they commit a crime, maybe they're doing so because they can get diverted to something they want, because it's available if they get arrested for juvenile crimes and diverted. Maybe you should learn to be a little more tough love with some of these things, but I would not sign any contract that doesn't have any dollar amount to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on consent minus C or G? Minus. All right. If not, we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. We pulled separately C and G. I suspect G will be slightly swifter. Let's go ahead and tackle that one briefly, and then we'll settle into C. G is a one-time permanent budget transfer from Douglas County Attorney Office to Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Who wants to give us some context on this one before we take questions?
Either Tricia York County Attorney's Office, and I also see Chief Deputy Rind here as well. I believe our office would like to train, we have a little bit of additional money in our budget that we haven't used. We had discussions with the Sheriff's Office about updating some of their nautical equipment, and because of the law enforcement nature of our office, as well as the duties we do as coroner, we thought that this would be a good fit, and we had this agreement with the Sheriff's Office, if it is agreeable to this board, to do that transfer.
Chief Rind, anything additional?
Chief Rind, Douglas County Sheriff's Office. Yeah, additionally, when I first got here in 2000, we had a rivercraft boat, River Class boat, to handle operations and recovery on the Missouri River. It takes a special size and certification of boat to appropriately navigate that river. That boat was already aged, and I think it was purchased in the mid-'90s and has been serviced ever since. Last year, after a couple decades in service, they decertified it and it had a rotten hull to it. So we were forced to use our lesser class boats, two of them, to do our latest river operation. And although any boat that will float will go on the river, it certainly creates a great deal of stress on those, and we had a couple breakdowns and parts like that, and it really extended our search efforts longer than we would have liked, given the nature of the recovery and the River Class. So we've, for several years, been researching and planning for a capital purchase of a new River Class boat, knowing that ours would eventually go out of service at some point in time, which it has. And we've done so in discussions with, you know, with any capital, since we have no set capital purchase budget, it's always our job to try and search out and seek out and identify various sources of revenue, whether that's surplus, private funds, partnerships such as with the Douglas County Attorney's Office, to try and fund those capital purchases. In this circumstance, as the coroner, we feel that's a great partnership. I know that the Papio NRD, we've had lengthy discussions with them, although I can't disclose the amount that they've potentially offered up because they have not yet brought that to a board or a public meeting. They have, I can tell you that in history, they have actually provided significant funds towards the purchase of other boats that we've had. So the history is there that they will follow through on their intentions as well. Again, I can't, they haven't brought that to their board yet, but that's another source of funds. And additionally, although we had asked for supplemental budget to handle the expenses of having additional personnel, we unfortunately had to release several sworn deputies from training and from the department, as well as delayed hiring on several civilians, so that as best as we try and predict our end-of-year money, so not have too much of a surplus, we ended up with a surplus this year, which we would like to identify as entering into this contract with Invantec Boats out of Washington. If we are able to secure the contract, they're able to give us a significant discount for entering into that contract early and putting a down payment on it, in which case they'll have that boat ready for us by springtime, which is really what we're shooting for.
Thank you, Chief Rind. We'll go into dialogue. Commissioner Borgeson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So you just said you came in and asked for a supplemental budget, and now you have a surplus?
That's correct.
And how much is that surplus?
Currently, I'm targeted, well, I have some money, I'm targeted to be somewhere around between, and it's approximate, between $250,000 and $300,000 over.
And how much is the boat in total?
If we purchase it on the payment system, it will be $390,000.
And this is for Lori. There's excess funds in the County Attorney's Office of $80,000, but yet they're coming in next week for a budget because they can't make the target. Is that correct?
Lori Purish, Douglas County Finance Director. The county attorney is not one of the departments coming in over target this year.
Okay, good. Thanks. So I guess, again, I mean, you've got $250,000 to $3,000 surplus now after a supplemental budget that we gave you, and the boat's $390,000, and this is $80,000, and you still don't have the rest of the money for the boat, correct?
Correct.
Or is this surplus being used for the boat now?
Well, I'll try and clarify some of my position here. So we had to ask for a supplement, specifically one unfunded portion that we asked for was $100,000 to pay out for people that would be retiring, asking for cash outs and whatnot. And I know that in that discussion with Mr. Bloomingdale and Lori, that, you know, once you get a budget, you can pretty much do what you want with it, or elected officials tend to do that. So our discussion was like, listen, if we don't need to pay people out in retirement, in which case we had several people retire that opted not to cash out, which is part of the reason we have a surplus. We predicted that they would cash out, and they chose not to, they just chose to stay on the books. So the intent on our office was to return that $100,000 that we had asked for in supplemental budgets, and, you know, as a goodwill gesture, you asked for it, we didn't need it, we were going to return it. Now, if the board's directing we do something else with it, as applied to the boat, that's certainly something we would be willing to explore.
And you're coming in next week for a, because you can't meet the target for next year's budget?
That is accurate.
And you haven't turned the $100,000 back yet, correct?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on this item? Commissioner Rogers?
Okay. So Chief, I'm just noting, I was inclined to vote for this because I want to support this vote, but I'm going to tell you, I'm going to vote against it, just for the fact that I want you all to understand, I don't like the way the budget process goes with you all. So you asked for this surplus, and then it's over, and then you take the money, and it's like a shell game, because then you come and use it for something else. And then the last couple of years, when I asked the question about money being set aside for that armored vehicle, and then nobody had a question for that, and it was there and it wasn't assessed for. So I'm just telling you for the record, I'm supportive of the vote, but you all, to me, need to put it in the budget and make it accountable for. It goes, these purchases of these big items go about in ways that this money's sitting here, it comes, you use it, and then it's like a smoking mirrors piece of bringing it forward. So I'm asking you all to do a better job of how you do this in the office, because I'd rather somebody come and ask for it than do this method of hoarding money, doing some other things, and this is really upsetting to me, the fact you asked for a surplus, the surplus is not there to use it. Now, you take that money for an item that wasn't budgeted, and then go from there. So that's my reason for voting against it.
Other comments or questions on this item? Milford, I'll take a round. As far as the boat conversation, so I know you had two, right, in recent history? Is that correct?
There was a total of three with the River Class boat, yes.
Total of three that were in usage for your team that does kind of those rescue operations and services. You're down to two, is that the case?
Yes.
Okay. And so this one would get you back up to three?
That's correct.
Okay. And so what is the total amount of boats that you see fit for the need in Douglas County for these kind of operations and services?
Captain Peterson is the commander over the nautical services. He might be able to better answer that. As far as I know, the three has operated, especially with each having a specific class and purpose, has been doing, to my knowledge, I'm not an expert in that area, but it seems to be doing the job.
Got it. And Captain Peterson, what's the 20-second summary of what the nautical services team does for Douglas County?
Good morning. Captain Christopher Peterson, Sheriff's Office. So we're the only law enforcement agency in Douglas County that has a boat recovery nautical services unit. We patrol all the waterways, bodies of water in Douglas County, to include the Missouri River. Real quick, we set the area lakes, rivers on a schedule and a rotation throughout the boating season. We get out there with our boat operators, we do education with the citizens out there, ensure that they have their life jackets, registration, insurance, all that kind of stuff. But then if there's a boat accident, we investigate those. Unfortunately, when there's a drowning, we put forth all of our efforts for the recovery operations with that, just like we did last month, or two months ago, rather, in April on the Missouri River.
Got it. Thank you, Captain Peterson. So similar to Commissioner Rogers, obviously, it's a service that is needing those counties, a service that specifically the Sheriff's Office does, so I'm supportive of the need for the boat, but I have issues on the budgetary side. And so I'll just make three quick points on the budgetary side. I'm inclined to support the boat for the need of it, but we, as a board, I think, are trying to set a tone for the future in regards to budgeting, especially with what the legislature's been doing to counties and cities in recent history with limiting our budgets in different ways. We just really need to set the tone with all departments, all 22 departments. So this is not just the Sheriff's Office. So personally, you know, I'm not a big fan of budget transfers between departments. Every department does their pitch for what they need for this upcoming year. We approve a budget for them. So when it starts to get into like, I don't want to call it a game, but a situation of like, here's some of my money, or here's some of my money, and kind of playing back and forth like that, I'm not a big fan of that. I'm just speaking as one commissioner. As far as supplements, I would echo that, you know, a supplement is for anything you absolutely need. You just absolutely cannot make budget because there was a tornado or a drowning that required a lot of overtime. You know, it's something you absolutely didn't not expect and that you absolutely need, and you're not going to make budget because of that unexpected expense. So that's what a supplement should be for, and I understand the situation with the retirements. And so maybe we could have waited till like May or early June to see if those retirements actually happened before we put in the supplement request. I don't know what the latest one can request a supplement, so I'll touch base with Lori on that. And so I'll finish my last thought here with, you can count it as my second round, but I'm just going to take like 30 seconds here. The last thing was, you know, I'm going to talk to my colleagues and our staff about supplements in general and how we go about those, because I don't like the fact that a supplement sets a new baseline for your upcoming next fiscal year target. I don't think that should be the case for all departments, again, not just Sheriff's Office. Because again, those supplements should be for things that were unexpected, and in my opinion, should not set a new baseline for your next fiscal year's target. And so that's something I'll be exploring as well. So again, this is just a reality we have to face as the fiduciaries of the entire county, all 22 departments, trying to keep us in budget, trying to do things that get us up to speed on our pension systems and everything that we have to make sure is funded comprehensively for both your department and all the other 21 departments, et cetera. So again, just a quick, a few quick perspectives on some of the things we have to consider on our end as commissioners. So again, I'm inclined to vote for the boat because I know it's needed. We just had multiple drownings on the Missouri, and we have an entire county to help out when it comes to nautical services. So let's just keep all of those things in mind as we work together as county partners. So let me go to Commissioner Morgan and then Commissioner Borgeson.
I just would say that I plan to support it, and I agree with what Rogers said in the transfer in the future of departments, and not just your department or the county attorneys, but all of them. I think we need to be extra careful because of what we're going to face in the future. So his statement was right on the mark of my agreement.
Thank you, Commissioner Morgan. We'll go to Commissioner Borgeson.
Thank you. So you have three boats right now, correct?
No, two. One has been decommissioned.
I'm sorry?
We have two. One has been decommissioned.
And one was just purchased before the new administration took over, correct?
I believe so.
Okay. And just so I'm clear, you asked for a supplemental budget, but now you have a surplus of between $250,000 and $300,000 that you're going to turn back, but you're asking for a transfer from the County Attorney's Office for $80,000, correct?
Well, the exact amount that we are going to have left over to turn back is yet to be determined. We had intended on turning back $100,000 of it, which we had asked for for payouts, and then to retain whatever balance we had towards the purchase of the boat, in addition to partnering with the County Attorney's Office for their $80,000, yes.
Well, I too am in support of the boats and what they do, but I do have another question. Is not the state the lead agency on waterway calls?
Captain Chris Peterson, they are not. We do have, loss of words here. Shoot, I'm trying to think of the agency. Anyway, no, we are the lead agency in Douglas County to investigate, you know, recovery or anything like that, and perform services on the waterways in Douglas County.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? Item G? If not, we'll go ahead and vote. Oh, sorry, you're right. Motion a second, please? Motion by Friend, second by Morgan. Now we'll vote.
Motion passes four to two. Commissioners Rogers and Borgeson voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We'll now go to item C on the consent agenda, make official the acceptance of the funding. Nebraska Crime Commission, BGAA, Office of Violence Prevention Award for Douglas County, for Douglas County Sheriff's Office for fiscal year 2026. So Chief Rind, do you want to tee us off? So, Chief Wren, do you want to tee us off?
Correct, so, as always, we are perpetually searching for funds, federal and state, to add particular personnel to the department as we can. This particular funding was sought out from the State of Nebraska Office of Violence Prevention. It offered the ability to, you had to specifically tailor that towards crime prevention, gang suppression, weapons suppression, things of that nature. So, we applied for the State of Nebraska through the Crime Commission with the proposed job description for a deputy to be added to the special operations group, in which time the State of Nebraska agreed with us, and they would like to award us a year's salary and benefits for that deputy.
Thank you, Chief Wren. Commissioner Borgerson?
Chief, is the, is this a new unit under the new administration?
Yes.
And how many started off in this unit?
Well, it was derived out of the, what would be the original vice narcotics unit.
No, I'm sorry?
It was originally derived, so it was repurposed out of the vice narcotics unit, which had five members in it. I believe it had a lieutenant, a sergeant, and, and three, or four investigators, based on how they were manning-wise. And then, that was repurposed into the special operations group, which still does narcotics work, but they also do a number of other duties with, with the probation and other office, the Office of Violence Prevention Gang Suppression Unit, you name it, they do, they do just about everything.
And so, the five members that were in the vice and narcotics were switched over and became the special operations group?
Some of them did, yes. The, the unique feature of the special operations group is that each and every one of them, it's required for them to be SWAT certified, or Special Weapons and Tactics certified. So, some of the vice narcotics units, members that were in place were already SWAT members, so they just transitioned over. And then, as the years have played out, they, we've rotated in various new members who are in fact SWAT certified members.
So, how many are in there now?
I believe we have a lieutenant, three sergeants. Each of those sergeants has one or two deputies underneath them.
So, when, okay, say that again.
There's a lieutenant in charge of the special operations group. Each of three shifts has a sergeant in charge of it. One of the shifts has two deputies, one of the shifts has one deputy, and, and I believe the last one has two. I'm not 100% sure on that.
Two, nine?
That seems a rather, between nine and 10.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
So, Chief Wren, the, so you said originally was the vice narcotics unit, and, and it expanded. Why did it expand into gangs? Did, would, would, did you all have a conversation with? Because my understanding is gang work was usually OPDs. So, if this is just starting, did you expand, did you expand into gangs? Because OPD, you all talked to OPD, and they needed help, or why did you get into gangs?
Well, we were always part of the Omaha Metro Task Force, both Drug and Metro Fugitive. So, gang work was completed, it just didn't have an official title with the Vice Narcotics Unit. It certainly wasn't their primary feature or function, but they've always assist, always assisted with gang suppression as they can, as they, especially as they tied to narcotics cases. But that role has been expanded, yes.
So, you said your SWAT and vice units, they're trained for SWAT. If I'm not correct, OPD's gang unit has a special training too. Did the people that were switched, or that this unit got expanded, did they get new gang training to get into this area?
And, and I don't want to speak out of turn, because certainly Chief Deputy Nimok's the, more of the expert on putting that unit together, as the chief of operations, so I'm, I'm trying to piece together my understanding of it. But when I say it was expanded into gang, there would be like one or two of those members that would be sent to training or would participate in the task force. They'd go meet with the gang task force, partner with them, learn the information they have. They have access to their intelligence database. And so, it's, it, not every unit was a quote-unquote "gang specialist" in the special operations group, but one or two of them have, have been peeled out to, to learn more about it and to, to work in that realm.
So, where, where had, I guess, the question is, so this is a new unit. The sheriff got elected in 2022. It may have been, at least could have been operative for two years, two and a half years. How many, how many outings, or how many calls has the gang unit got called off?
Oh, I wouldn't know that, sir.
Okay. Did, um, did you start, I'm assuming you're saying you're partnering, are you, do you partner with OPD when you go in with gang unit stuff? Or is your, is your gang, I mean, obviously, it's, what's your boundaries of your gang intervention?
Are you talking about physical boundaries in town, or?
Yeah, because, did OPD's gang unit, did you start it because OPD's gang unit needed help? The gang activity increased?
No, I just think we want to make sure that while the special operations unit is out there operating in all of greater Douglas County, Omaha, that they, if they encounter different types of crimes or different types of criminal activity, that they're able to recognize it and respond to it.
So, are you, are you familiar with a Wednesday meeting that happens in North Omaha called Omaha 360?
I am.
So, you have a officer, she comes every week and reports, and I have never heard her report on a gang incident that you all were involved in. She reports on a lot of other stuff, so that's what I'm trying to gauge. How often is the unit engaged in gang activity?
I don't have a report for you. I know that it's probably lower, which we're, we're happy to report. I just want, we have added this, this particular position to be of assistance in the greater Omaha area and the gang unit, in addition to the ones who've already been trained.
Was last, was last week's incident on 48th and Pratt, Pratt the first time that the gang unit's been exercised?
I don't know the answer, and I don't know that I could answer that question, now that we're, we're still in their investigation.
I got another question, if nobody's coming.
Let me loop back around very soon here, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Borgerson, and then we'll loop back around.
Okay, just real quick, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, can you get us the data of the unit calls in unincorporated Douglas County versus Omaha area?
I know that they prepare a daily report for everything they do. I don't know that it's put out in like a spreadsheet of this many of this and this many of that, but it's a, a summary that they conducted surveillance, they arrested certain persons.
But you would have an area for which the, the unit got called to?
Well, they don't get called per se. They self-initiate, they're investigators, so based on their intelligence.
But they would report?
But they also respond to calls, that they're monitoring the network for both Omaha and Douglas County for activities that are higher risk, shootings, pursuits, et cetera. And, and if they're in the area, they would assist with those. But yes, we do have the ability to dial in on where they're at and what their operations are. I don't know that it's collated in a neatly reportable format, but I'm certain we can do that.
Okay, and then, the, the unit that you're talking about in this agenda item is adding another one to that special operations group, which is under investigation of an incident that occurred a week ago.
The unit is not under investigation, no.
But the, the unit that went is the special operations group?
That is correct.
That was there, okay, just wanted to be clear, thank you.
Commissioner Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So, you said self-engaged. The unit, you just said the unit was self-engaged.
At times, yes.
So, would, is there a courtesy that's given to a jurisdiction if you go into the area that's already been served? For instance, your gang unit started last two years, OPD's gang unit started the, it's been around for a while. I guess I'm trying to figure out, when you're saying it's self-engaged, would you contact OPD if they needed help gang-wise? Or would you just, and since it's traditionally their realm and their territory, or you just, you just self-engage?
Well, I don't manage that unit, but I, I have worked in the vice narcotics area myself, and there's continually a mutually reciprocal notifications going that, hey, if we're going to do an operation in that area, we'll discuss it with the on-shift persons, or radio, or, so that they're aware that we're operating in a certain area, so that there are no blue-on-blue incidents.
Is that the protocol for the gang operation now, though? Because the narcotics unit was there, you said it evolved. Is that the practice for the gang unit that's morphed out of that now?
I, I don't have a direct knowledge of what their, their protocols and practices are.
Would it be, would it be the regular practice to give a courtesy to another jurisdiction you're going into?
Depending on the, the reason and the, the nature of why they're doing it, certainly, yeah.
Has OPD asked you all for help in gang operations?
I don't know that answer.
Okay, so, I know there's some other questions, but, you know, just note, I would, I'm going to move that this be held over a week, and I'm going to move that it be held over a week for time for this investigation to happen. And I want to ask you all to give some verification that OPD knows and signs off on this. Because this is, um, everything's going on, there's a lot of questions, this is kind of shaky to me, and, and you can't answer any questions for me now. So, I'm going to ask, after the discussion happens, for this to be held over a week, so we can get some answers to this before this is approved. Because I want to see when you all come in for your budget, if you're going to ask for more money for increased force area. And if that's the case, then my question's going to be, why are you going into other areas when, and you're asking for stuff in existing areas to get there? So, just know at the end of this, I'm going to ask that, but I know there's some other questions that want to be asked. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, we'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Will, thanks for the information. I, I can tell you, historically SWAT teams and, and special operations units, coordination's based on collaboration between law enforcement jurisdictions and investigative authority in large metropolitan areas. I can also say that I, I saw down in the corner that Chief Nimok is on the Zoom. Some of those questions might be able to be answered if Chief is in front of his monitor. Mr. Chair?
That'd be fine if you have a question for him.
I am, I am here, thank you, Commissioner.
Chief, I do, Chief, I do have a question. I, I made a statement that, that historically SWAT teams and, and special operations units coordinate and collaborate in areas that, that have large, that have large metropolitan law enforcement agencies, and multiple ones. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yes, for sure. The, uh, you have, like, our special operations group, but not limited to our special operations group. We regularly have communication with all partner agencies, local, state, and federal, and operate in, in the terms of what we call deconfliction. And that means essentially a level of cooperation to know what each agency is, is working on, to help collaborate and share information, to ensure that services aren't duplicated, that investigations aren't compromised without another agency's knowledge. And so, for a unit like the special operations group, that practice is, is a day-to-day routine.
Chief, uh, Chief, thanks for the info. One more quick question. I, I want to make sure, and I'm not, I'm not implying that anybody on this board is indicating as such, but I want to make it, it clear, there are differences between special weapons and tactics units and special operations units. However, neither of those units are, I would say that the predominant investigative authority rolls into gang unit suppression. Special op, uh, special weapons and tactics are used all over the county, and that collaboration's pretty important. I guess what I'm saying is, can you give a, a clear distinction between, and, the SOG and maybe SWAT, and how they'd be applied in any particular situation?
Yes, like Chief Wren had stated, the, the unit was originally formed from members from our vice intelligence, narcotics, and organized crime division. And what the purpose of that unit was is to combine the talents of, of that unit along with other functions that had pre-existed as well. And that's, as an example, our, our metro area fugitive task force that has partnership with local agencies and federal agencies to, for more apprehension. And, and also, in terms of, of liaison purpose, not, not the sole purpose, but a gang liaison opportunity that, you know, cooperates with, in this case, OPD gang, NSP intel, things of that nature. And so...
Okay, Chief, Chief, I'm out of time. Maybe some others will have questions in that regard. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. I'll take a round. Chief, could you give us a little bit of insight? This additional staff person that is funded under this grant, it goes to the special operations unit. What is that person supposed to be doing in their role?
Well, as Chief Wren stated, the, the special operations unit is, is, has a varied member of tasks, to include everything from the, the organized crime side of things, investigating cartel-related activity on the narcotics trafficking side of things, to fugitive apprehension, to gang liaison, with our gang nexus being that Irvington area and the growth that is expanding into that over the course of the next, you know, zero, five years, as well as the gang nexus to both courthouse operations and probation assistance. And so, there, it's a, it's a varied group that is comprised over three units, a day shift, an evening shift, and a night shift. The night shift is primarily composed to address crime suppression and crime prevention roles that have a, you know, a tangent to Douglas County as a whole, but also unincorporated Douglas County.
Thank you, and for how long is this grant? Is it just a one-time, one-year grant?
Chief Wren be able to address the specific timelines there?
Correct, it's designed to be one-year salary of a top-down deputy and benefits.
Yeah, okay. So, part of the problem with grants in general is that, you know, you add that one personnel, the grant's done in the year, and then, you basically try to find a way to just incorporate it into your larger budget, which means your larger budget grows, your expenses grow, on top of, you know, all the other things you're trying to, to grow within your budget, not just you as Sheriff's Department, but all, this is a problem for all departments. Like, you know, if the Health Department wants to add somebody from a federal grant, well, then the same thing will happen. When that grant runs out in one year, three years, then, you know, you either cut the staff member, or you try to incorporate it into the, the larger grant. Same thing with our juvenile justice grants, right? So, I'm just saying, it'd be, definitely would, would be nice if this was a, a longer-term grant, like, three years, one year is one year. A, a part of, part of the big-picture tension for some of our law students and law clerk office personnel in the back corner, and other community members who, who may not be too familiar, is that, you know, historically, Sheriff's Department, you know, takes care of unincorporated Western Douglas County, takes care of the court system and the, the complex here, Civic Center. And of course, there are some things that you are involved with across the county, and you do have jurisdiction across the county. There's no doubt about that. You know, and you help transfer inmates, you help cover inmates when they go to hospitals, you help transfer youth in detention, you help serve warrants. So, there's no doubt that you have involvement across the entire county. involvement across the entire county. However, a part of the tension that some, Commissioner Rogers was alluding to is, when we start getting more into, like, city of Omaha jurisdiction, gang prevention efforts, city of Omaha patrolling in general, well, we have the city of Omaha that's in charge of that, they do have a much larger budget, they're authorized to hire even 120 more officers, so a part of the tension is, how much do we need to be involved in city of Omaha proper in some of those areas versus just making sure we do well what we do well historically and currently? So, those kind of questions, I'm sure we will expand more upon next week at the actual budget conversation as we try to understand how you are a million dollars over your target budget and what those funds are supposed to go towards, both your overall budget and the extra million over target that you are over. So, I'll reserve those questions for later. Commissioner Rogers, did you have a motion or not on this item?
I got my last.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I also missed Commissioner Kavanaugh, and then I'll circle back to Rogers.
Chairman Garcia touched on this, but I'd like some clarification, because I don't actually see the termination date, and maybe I'm just missing it, but it does talk about annual reports, which would seem to mean more than a year. Is there an actual year-end date here? Because I'm not seeing the year-end date. What I'm seeing is that there is a grant amount, we received this money from the State Crime Commission of $130,000. They approved this on March 17th of this year, and then it has reporting dates going forward through next year, and it talks about, regardless of the start date of the grant project, activity report is due in the quarters going forward, but it doesn't say up to an ending quarter. Is there, is there something in here regarding the end date of this contract?
Not on the agenda item, but as, as the documents come through for signature, there's a beginning and end date for that, and that is, we have our grant writer who files our quarterly reports as they are, the activities are documented and set through for the tasks that we identify that we're gonna do or try and do during the, during that time period. I do know that, to the extent that the word, this is a one-year grant, the reason for those quarterly reports is to show the verification that we're actually doing what we said we were gonna do, but also provides a foundation for, I think, to give you a similar example from the state of Nebraska, we're on our third two-year renewal for a grant for Sardan Path for mental health, so if awarded, that'll be, that'll be up to six years. She's already gotten, that position has already been awarded twice in two-year increments, and we're waiting the potential award of the final, which would make it six years. So, with a grant such as this, we would be able to apply for yet another year, which is why we want to have that quarterly reporting accurate and up to speed, and we do have the ability, if we get a late start in hiring somebody, to file for a grant adjustment as to the end period, which I've done several times in different grants, as we've been awarded and we didn't have the position yet filled, and they would give us another quarter to report or another two quarters to report.
So, I know we received annually significant funding from the State Crime Commission.
Correct.
For a lot of different activities. Do I understand you correctly that you anticipate that this particular grant would be continued beyond a one-year grant?
We'll certainly apply for it. I can't guarantee as to whether they'll give it to us or not.
Okay, so, it's the sheriff's office intention to continue this as a State Crime Commission grant-supported position?
Yes.
All right. That's all. Thank you.
Commissioner Kavanaugh, before I take a motion, I do want to allow public input, if there is any. Is there anybody? Okay.
Levine, Dennis Williams, 1941, South 42nd Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here to ask you all to please not accept this grant. At a time when every single jurisdiction in this country is getting rid of these type of units, Douglas County is asking to grow theirs. Regardless of what they call it, what is referred to in the criminal justice arena is they're called jumpouts. Jumpouts are literally just that. They're rogue units of law enforcement that have been put together, they use names that make you think that they are about public safety, when in fact, it's about trampling on people's Fourth Amendment and civil rights. 94% of the people who have been victimized by these units are black people. What this means is that there is nobody calling them, saying, can you report to this crime? They literally drive around communities in unmarked cars, plainclothes, and if they see something that looks suspicious, they jump up. They don't have to have probable cause, and what they do is they intimidate, they antagonize communities. There's some, there's communities where this has become such of a problem. Before people like you all stepped in and said, no, we're not gonna fund these type of units, where black boys would just see these unmarked cars, and they would just immediately raise their shirts up, because that is the level of harassment that takes place when you have these special units. I don't care what he calls it, that special operation group is no more than what's referred to as a jumpout, and the jumpouts are being disbanded in every single state, and the reason why they're being disbanded is if you look at the Tyree Nichols case in Memphis, Tennessee, that was the result of a jumpout, where this man was driving, they said, they usually use a low-level probable cause to apprehend or to have contact, but this guy supposedly had a rolling stop. His results was he was beat the crap out of. You look at the situation in our own backdoor a couple of weeks ago. Today, we don't know what the probable cause was, because you know what? These units don't have to have probable cause. They operate under the guise of public safety, and if communities fall for it, all you're doing is deputizing harassment and civil rights violations. The units have absolutely no purpose in communities, they do not lower crime. In fact, every single state you look at, and you don't have to take my words, just take your phones out now and Google, every single state you look at, they have resulted in destroying police-community relations, because the people that are most impacted, the black communities and the Latino communities, they cannot differentiate between, oh, this is Aaron Hansen's goon squad, this is the Omaha Police, so they end up just hating all police. And we have come too far in terms of building police-community relations to allow Sheriff Hansen to ego-trip, put together this unit. It has never existed in the history of Douglas County, and it will not do anything to solve crime or fight crime, it's just giving them ammunition to harass black boys if they see them hanging out, it doesn't even have to, they don't even have to be hanging out, they can just pull over a car. And for Commissioner Rogers and Commissioner Garcia, I know Commissioner Rogers, that should be a concern for you, because you have two black boys who drive. And for Commissioner Friend, a lot of your people in your community will be impacted by this squad. There's a lot of black, black men that live in your district. My son is one of them. So, I'm asking you all, I have done years of research on this. As an attorney, I've been part of legal litigation, where I helped represent families who are the victims of these jumpout squads. So, he's given it a nice name, but they're just jumpouts, and I'm asking you to please research it before you fund this, 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 this grant, or accept this grant.
Thank you.
Sherman Wells, 4718 Kansas Avenue. So, I want you to take out your notepads, because I'm gonna give you all some brief history lessons real quick. The sheriff's department, they don't need this money for gang suppressions, okay? Because there are no gangs to suppress. We don't have a gang issue, we have a poverty issue. We have a young people that's misguided issue. They are bonding through poverty. The problem is Hansen missed the good old days of action when he was in the gang unit himself. See, we gotta get back to the root cause of the issue, which is the lack of trades and jobs, which creates poverty, and unfortunately, the North Omaha Business District is the only part of the city that has no business district with gain for employment and haven't had it since the murder of my cousin Vivian Strong, okay? That was in 1969. No commerce equals poverty and crime. That's another topic, but I'm saying this, the Omaha Police is fully capable of patrolling the city streets, and they themselves still need to work on training on how to deal with the diversity of this city. The last thing we need is to add another rogue deputy to this group of untrained rogue deputy county officers on fake gang prevention suppression missions, driving around in unmarked cars in North Omaha, pulling up on young males in front of their home, drawing their weapons at 2:30 in the morning with fake concepts of fear for their life, all because Hansen missed the good old days of his time on the gang unit, where he personally terrorized North Omaha. Because y'all don't know, I don't know if you do know, but Hansen went to a majority-black school, okay? So, he created or already developed his distaste for North Omaha, and the gang unit was his way of personal revenge. And to be honest, with all the training Douglas County officers receive, they should always use the de-escalation tactic, not escalating, causing dangerous situations at 2:30 in the morning, and then to turn around and say, I'm scared for my life, when you caused the danger. Easily, you could have called a black and white to assess this situation, at least the people in that neighborhood would have known that this is the police, not some white man jumping out of an all-black tenet car with no uniform on, talking about, show me your hands, okay? And I know most likely y'all might pass this, and like the commissioner said, he might hold it over, but just remember on this day, June 3rd, that I warned this board of the dangers of allowing these sheriffs with their jumpout squads to patrol and have secret killing missions in North Omaha. The sheriff's office is not needed on these city streets. The police can handle it. Them themselves still need more training on how to deal with North Omaha. Hansen wants to relive his good old days on the gang unit, so that's why you see the creation of this unit under his leadership. Let's not act like we surprised, or we don't know the history of this man.
Thank you.
Tamika Meese, 4815 North 145th Circle. I have prepared a statement, because this issue is very emotional and hits home, as I am a resident, born and raised of North Omaha. Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tamika Meese, and I'm the founder and executive director of North Omaha Community Partnership. I'm here today to speak in strong opposition to the sheriff's office request for $130,622 in funding for the expansion of the special operations group under the Nebraska Crime Commission Grant for Gang Suppression. This request comes just 12 days after the fatal shooting of 19-year-old Janidi Ibrahim by this very unit. Our community is still hurting. The family has not yet seen the body camera footage, though the sheriff's office has agreed to allow them to view it this week. We are still waiting for answers, and we are watching very closely. To move forward with this funding without full transparency, public discussion, or completed review is not just inappropriate, it is harmful. It's harmful and disrespectful to a grieving family, harmful to the community trust, and it is damaging to the progress that we've been working toward in building safe, safer and more connected neighborhoods. This item found buried in the consent agenda attempts to expand a unit that has already caused deep concern without addressing that concern or engaging the community in the process. The Douglas County Sheriff's Office has not been transparent or collaborated with the Omaha Police Department or local organizations like ours to ensure that strategies for public safety reflect the voices and the needs of the people most impacted. At NOCP, we are committed to real solutions, solutions that uplift youth, stabilize families, and invest in prevention, not just enforcement. We work directly with families affected by violence, and they are telling us, we don't need more mobilized militarized policing, we need justice, opportunity, and accountability. We are not saying ignore crime, we're saying let's address it responsibly. Let's not expand a unit shrouded in secrecy and controversy, especially at a time when trust is so fragile. Before the final approving of this funding, we urge you to delay acceptance until a full transparent review of the special operations group conduct and policies is made available, ensure a full debrief of the Janidi Ibrahim case, and that is shared with the public following the family's viewing of the footage, and commit to developing a community oversight process before any expansion of this unit is considered. We cannot heal without truth, and we cannot move forward without accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions or motions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd actually like to move to...
Lay this over to June 24th, one, to give time for the investigation the county attorney is given to take place, and two, I would like for the sheriff's office to confirm where OPD stands on this, and lastly, to give the sheriff any opportunity to clarify things before this is voted on. So, my motion is to lay this over to June 24th.
Motion layover to June 24th. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, my board's in. And we'll vote.
Commissioner Friend voting no, all other commissioners voting yes to lay over the item to June 24th.
Thank you. That completes our consent agenda. Next, we have new business. I placed these items under new business because there was some uncertainty around whether these items were within the current budget or not, so I put them under new business so we can have that discussion to clarify some items. So, they're both related to the clerk of the district court. We'll take them one at a time, though, again, they're related. Item A says, resolution to approve the master service agreement with Signee X Incorporated for remote online notary platform to allow the clerk of district court's office to provide the service to the public, and B is the resolution to approve master service agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics for Online Payment Trial in the clerk of the district court's office. So, we could take a motion for both and have a comprehensive discussion on the items. Motion to approve A and B. Is there a second? If no second, then the motion will die, and, but we can still have a discussion without If there's no second, all right, we'll go back to just A, and without a motion, we'll just have a dialogue on the agenda item. Lori or somebody else, do you want to kick us off on context?
Lori Pursh, Finance Director. I am not familiar with this remote online notary platform, so I'm sorry, I cannot speak to this one.
Is there somebody on Zoom or in the chamber from the clerk of the district court's office that could provide some context for both items? If not, then we'll just not approve it. All right. Well, I'm gonna move on. That completes new business. We'll go to recognitions and proclamations. Item A is a resolution honoring the life and accomplishments of former UNO chancellor and Omaha Douglas County Public Building Commission member John Christensen. I will hand it over to Commissioner Rogers for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll read the resolution and then move. Says, whereas John Christensen, an Omaha native and first-generation college student, earned a Master of Science in Special Education and Speech Pathology from the University of Nebraska at Omaha in the 1970s, and whereas in 1978, he began his distinguished career at UNO as a faculty member in the College of Education's Department of Special Education and Communication Disorders, later serving as the department chair, dean of the College of Education, and vice chancellor for academic and student affairs. And whereas John Christensen was appointed interim chancellor of UNO in 2006 and named chancellor in May of 2007, becoming the first UNO graduate to hold the university's top leadership position. And whereas during his tenure as chancellor, John Christensen played a pivotal role in elevating UNO to Division One Athletic elevating UNO to Division One Athletics and led the development of Baxter Arena, significantly enhancing the university's visibility and community engagement. And whereas from 2017 to 2023, John Christensen served on the Omaha Douglas County Public Building Commission, where he was instrumental in the successful completion of several major projects, including the new Douglas County Justice Center. And whereas John Christensen passed away on May 28, 2025, at the age of 76, leaving behind a profound legacy of service, leadership, and commitment to education and public service. And whereas he will be deeply missed by his friends, colleagues, and all those who live, whose, whose lives he's touched in Douglas County and the city of Omaha. Now, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby honors the life and legacy of John Christensen and extends its deepest sympathies to his family and loved ones upon his passing." And I move to approve.
Second by Morgan. And...
And if I could say, Mr. Chair, you know, um, we'll get this to the family, but, you know, on just a personal note with John, um, there was a position I had at UNO that was really disputed by a couple of descendants and senators that a guy was funding for, uh, a rehabilitation of citizens returning from prison. And John was an ardent supporter of that. Uh, and I know for get the support he gave me for that and, and backing that position and just noting his, um, love and emphasis for young people. So, uh, he will be missed and, uh, uh, his spirit will live on. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers. We'll go to Commissioner Friend.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John wasn't as, uh, Commissioner Rogers got, you know, academic help from him. I, I don't think he ever gave me that, but what I can tell you, I met John, U, UNO, the University of Nebraska at Omaha, used to have a football team. I don't know if some of you remember that. They did. And I was at a football game at Knigley Field and John, uh, I was sitting right next to John for some reason and my wife and a couple of kids. And he said, "You gotta..." There was a certain type of ice cream, I don't remember what. And he's, he said, "You gotta try this." And I go, "John, I don't, I don't want the ice cream." And John goes, "No, you do want it. It's very good, you have to try it." And I go, "John, I don't know, maybe I'll buy some for the kids." Next thing I know, there's like five things of ice cream in front of me. He's running around handing ice cream out like a vendor. And I don't, I tried to pay him and he wouldn't let me. I didn't know John that well, but, uh, my kids think he was Santa, they thought he was Santa Claus. So it was great. Um, I got to know him a little bit and I'll miss him as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Friend. Commissioner Morgan?
Well, I go back to John's father, Axel Christiansen, living in North Omaha for 30th, who did, uh, drywall for me when I was building the homes in the 70s. In fact, the home Annie and I live in, he did the drywall, his father, Axel. And John and I talked about that and then I was lucky enough to serve on the building commission with John. And just really a caring, excellent person in our community. And Chris, I want to thank you for bringing this resolution forward because he was a special, special person. Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll go ahead and vote.
Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner Kavanaugh is absent at the moment.
All right. We'll go to section seven in the agenda, public hearings. We have two public hearings today. One is item A, a public hearing regarding resolution to amend Douglas County purchasing policy in regards to the purchase of plaques, certificates of achievement, and other items to be awarded. Uh, it's an increase from $50 of a limit to $100, uh, and also for recognitions dinners, recognition dinners as well. Um, before I take a motion on this, I think there was a friendly amendment to, uh, mention of gift cards. Oh, yeah. Let's open the public hearing first on section A of public hearings and the gift cards thing.
So Commissioner Patrick Bloomingdale County Administration, I think, uh, the county attorney can speak to it, but basically there's a, and there's a line in here in the second to last paragraph, and it's the now, therefore. And it just says, for example, gift cards, retirement plaque, et cetera. We just want to change gift cards to plaques because gift cards, it's, it's really difficult to administer those because it's taxable income to the employee. And we've had issues with that in the past, giving out gift cards for employees, but I don't know if Teresa wants to add to that.
And that, Teresa York County Attorney's Office, that is correct. And, and the plaque, the language of using the word plaque is closely, more closely aligns with this Nebraska statute. And it goes ahead and gets rid of that concern we have with regards to any IRS regulations and taxing those gift cards.
Thank you. Can I get a motion with that amendment already included? Public hearing's still open, so we'll take the, the motion after we close the, uh, public hearing. My apologies. Commissioner Borgson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're not putting in the gift card, correct? That's not...
We're going to take that out, replace it with plaque.
And, you know, I, I actually would support this, but at a time where we're, uh, fiscally crunching numbers everywhere we turn around, um, I just don't think this is the time, uh, to do it. I actually think it should be more, but, um, but I just don't think we can do it at this time. We have to really take a look at everything at this juncture.
Thank you, Commissioner Borgson. Other comments or questions from board or public on this item? Commissioner Friend?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is it, is it possible, um, is the timing on this extremely, um, important? And I, and I don't know if anybody, Patrick or anybody would want to weigh in on that. I, I don't like to call you out like that, but is the timing on this pretty important? Can we get through, I mean, Commissioner Borgson makes an interesting point. It's not a lot of money, but, you know, every time we turn around, um, four times already today, we've been dealing with weird stuff, but the, uh, or strange stuff that put us in a weird spot. I, I don't care. I mean, I think we could do it, but I'm, I'm just wondering about the timing. Does it have to be done today?
I don't believe so. This was a request brought by one of the county offices and, uh, I, I don't think that there's any kind of pressing issue with that. You just never, you know, when a retirement comes up or, or whatever it is. So I, I, I would say that it's not pressing, but if, if anybody else has any, from that office has any comments, then they're free to make them.
Commissioner Borgson?
Can, can we get, maybe this needs to just be held over, um, or, or not approved today and discussed during the budgeting process. Um, but can we get the details of, you know, how much are we spending on this, uh, per year? Or have we spent on this in the last five years? Can, can we get that report, especially during the budgeting process that we're going through?
Dan S. Douglas County Clerk, I think we should be able to. There's supposed to be, I'm only second guessing myself because I'm here at the meeting, but I mean, there's supposed to be a certain co, uh, cost code you use when you're, um, you know, like when the clerk, the auditors, the clerk's office get a, um, one of these things for payment, there's a certain cost code they're supposed to use. So I would think we should be able to run a report that shows how much we've been, um, spending on these retirement, uh, gifts, if you will, um, or recognitions, uh, for the last, however long you want to go back, five years.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can break it down year by year.
Okay. That'd be great. Thank you.
There's no motion yet, yeah.
It's a public hearing that I'll...
Maybe we could just leave.
Yeah. Yeah. Action can be taken today, but we don't have to take action today, so we could just let it be as well. Uh, from seeing minimal emails on the topic, I know, I'm not concerned about the cost. I know that, um, one of the rationale was that plaques in general and, and awards, you know, some of them are costing like $54 instead of $50. So the limit is just like slightly low beyond the modern cost of some of these plaques and awards that are being given out to like retiring employees and, and some of these employee-related celebrations. So I'm, I'm not overly concerned about it, but I'm also okay if we want to just, uh, learn more about how much we're spending annually and, uh, talk about it throughout the budget process. Anybody else have a comment on this item? All right. In that case, I'll close the public hearing on this and if there's no motion, we can just loop back around to it. Sound good? Okay. I'm going to go to item B, uh, public hearing item for increased budgets for Douglas County Youth Center Teachers Contract Settlements, FOPA contract settlement, the JAC, and Corrections. I'm going to open the public hearing for item B and I will ask Lori, our Finance Director, to give us some context on this item.
Good morning, commissioners. Lori Persch, Finance Director. Um, as you know, we pass the budget at the beginning of every year and then we have two budget supplements. We have the larger budget supplement every March and that one accounts for, the reason that one's larger is that it accounts for the annual raise that the board, uh, grants for the Douglas County employees. Then we have a smaller budget adjustment, uh, usually, uh, last meeting of May or first meeting of June. And so that is what this one is. So the total request, uh, for this budget adjustment is about 1.2 million, which is about 500,000 less than it was, than the smaller, uh, budget supplement was last year. And we'll go through what, uh, what this is going to cover. So 960,000 of this approximately, uh, 1.2 million dollar, uh, budget supplement is unfunded. Uh, 10,000 of it is for the public safety bond and 950,000 of this unfunded, unfunded portion is for the salary adjustment fund. The public safety bond, the, the is a cost of approximately 10,000, but that is to pay for tax adjustment expenses that came through this year for the corrections bond, which closed in 2017. We had to pay for those adjustments then out of the public safety bond, um, because we had to pay for that out of something. And, uh, so now my public safety bond is 10,000 short. And I had budgeted the exact amount, like to the penny, for principal and interest that I plan to pay this year. So now I just need that to make the final payment. Uh, the salary adjustment fund is 950,000 and we'll flip to the next page and you'll see where those dollars, which, uh, departments that's going to go to. So about 900,000 of that, 9468 dollars, is going to corrections for, uh, the settlement of the FOP eight union contract. So that's retro and then for the remainder of the, um, fiscal year. And then about 50,000, 50,901 dollars are going to the DCYC, the youth center, uh, for settlement of the teachers' union contract. The other amount that is in this budget supplement is actually funded and that is additional community-based aid grant funds that were received by the JAC, the Juvenile Assessment Center. And so they have 245,749 dollars that they would like to, uh, add to their budget and spend this year. But that portion is funded. So in total, you can see that it's, uh, these departmental, uh, budget adjustments from the ju, from the general fund are just shy of the 1.2 that I was talking about, 1.197. So if you take that, that number at the bottom there, you can, it's the first number listed there, the departmental budget adjustments that we just went through. So it was the salary adjustments for corrections, the salary adjustments for DCYC, um, the 245,000 for the JAC. So that's that 1.197. Then there's the 10,000 there that we discussed from the first page, uh, to fund, uh, that public safety bond fund. And then we can back out just a little bit because I had a small balance remaining in the salary adjustment fund. So the total, uh, budget supplement that I am asking to be approved here is 1,205,749 dollars. Pretty straightforward, but I will, uh, welcome any questions.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Thank you. And, uh, thanks for this. Um, I just have one question on the, um, youth centers, um, teachers' salaries, uh, which per this contract we've increased. And I, um, ask Marcos, maybe you could give us the starting salary under this contract for our teachers at the center.
Sure. Commissioner Marcos Sammartine, Douglas County Administration. Uh, so the, what's before you, so that, that, that particular labor contract, it's the DCYC teachers and, uh, the DCYC teacher classification in the county, their pay line, uh, step one minimum, um, so the minimum pay is $30.11. That's about 62.6 annually, 62,600 annually. And, uh, step nine, the maximum step on that, uh, pay scale is 39.85. And that's, that comes to about 82,900 annually. So 30.11 to 39.85 for the 2025 year.
Okay. And that's under the new contract?
That is under the new contract, right. And, um, so it was a partial adjustment for the year, uh, so, because that was retroed back to January 1st of 2025. So that's what Lori's referring to in, in part, that's that, uh, let's see, about 50,000 dollars. That, uh, that 50,901, that was retroed back to January 1st of this year. And so it, it just covered a handful of months.
So we're starting teachers...
We are.
Step one teachers at 62,600, right?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And, you know, I think that's a good thing. We've got responsibility to educate these kids while they're in our care and, um, that's competitive with, uh, the metropolitan area. I think it's actually maybe a little better than OPS and some of the other, uh, school districts. And so, um, I think that's a, a, a good thing for us and a good thing for Douglas County and good things for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to Commissioner Borgson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, I agree with that, um, the statements by Commissioner Kavanaugh on this. And, but don't we get reimbursed? That's funded too, isn't it? The teacher salaries are reimbursed. We get reimbursement for those.
I think it is reimbursed and I'll, um, Marcos can probably speak to that as well, but we will still need those dollars to pay them, you know, this budget year.
Right. Right. But we can show that there's reimbursement for that as well, correct?
Yeah, actually, so then maybe next time I could classify this one as funded, even though that's probably going to come next fiscal year, not in the next four weeks before this fiscal year closes.
Yes, Commissioner, you, you're correct. We are reimbursed. The superintendent has conveyed that we are reimbursed for those salaries.
Okay.
That's a good point, Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect.
Thank you. Uh, public hearing is still open for this item. Is there any other comments or questions?
Larry Stewart, 5015 Lafayette Avenue, Omaha, 68132. I'm against this, but I have a major question to answer why. We already have an education system in Omaha. Apparently, they failed that. And now we're asking somebody else to teach them in the county jail or the juvenile center. I'm opposed to this fund because it, whether it's a, a community grant, uh, a federal grant, whoever the grant money is from wants to tell you how to run your show. They want control of the funds and the programs. So it takes it out of the hands of the education people. The public school system should have done their job to start with. Let's put them to task on this instead of creating another program and more money from taxpayers. If it's a federal grant, that's going away probably. If it's a community grant such as the Sherwood Foundation, they're going to tell you what to do and how to do it. That's how those things work. So why not just stop the program, use the Omaha Public Schools as it was intended? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on this item? If not, I will close the public hearing. What is the will of the board? Motion Joe approved by Morgan, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero. Commissioner, uh, Rogers is no longer at the meeting.
Thank you. We'll go into committees, section eight of our agenda. Under Finance, we have our budget report as presented. We also have our monthly fee report also as presented. The third item is to extend the Deloitte ARPA contract through April 30th, 2027. I will toss it to Lori for quick context.
So we have a, a contract with Deloitte that expires on June 6th, I believe, of this year. And they assist us... And they assist us with a lot of the ARPA work to make sure that the ARPA expenditures that we're making are in agreement with what the ARPA regulations will allow. And then they also help us with the quarterly filings with the Treasury. So this, I think we had a contract and it had two one-year extensions. This would just extend the contract so that they could help us through the end of the ARPA period. So all the funds have to be expended by 12/31 of 2026. But we still have, so the quarterly report would be due then at the end of the next quarter, so March 31st of 2027. And we're just going to extend it through April in case there'd be any extensions or issues or errors. I don't foresee any of that. There is no additional cost to this because there was already a bucket of dollars that had been approved by the board. The previous finance director had done that. I think it was 200,000. If I go back, I'd have to double check that to be sure. But I think that was the amount. We still have 73,000 remaining. So I think that will be enough to get us through the end of ARPA. It certainly will be enough to get us through this fiscal year. So this has no dollars that need to be associated. It just needs to extend the length of time that Deloitte can assist us.
Motion approved by Borgeson, second by Morgan. We'll continue with Commissioner Kavanaugh.
Yes. This goes back to the original ARPA award a number of years ago. And I oppose the employment of Deloitte at that time. And I would oppose the continuation of them at this time. We have 2,000 and plus employees in Douglas County. We have more than adequate expertise to do what we're putting out to them. And at a amount that I'm not sure will actually come out as 200,000. And as you just heard, it may not. But 200,000 was set aside. And I don't see a, that's a big advantage to the taxpayers of Douglas County. So I'm going to continue to vote no on this contract.
Thank you. Any other, excuse me, comments or questions on this item? If not, we'll vote.
Motion passes four to one. Commissioner Kavanaugh voting no, all other commissioners voting yes.
Thank you. We'll jump down to Human Resources, where we have our weekly personnel report from civil service as presented. We do have a need for executive session today for the purpose of litigation, legal advice, and personnel. Do I have a motion second for executive session? Motion by Morgan, second by Friend. Please vote.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. The board will now go into executive session for the purpose of litigation, legal advice, and personnel.
Yes.
Why don't you listen?
See?
It's a good one.
That's very good, yes, I think so. Pretty easy to be. Okay. Sir, how you doing? What you got?